You are Alpha and Omega. We worship you, my love. You are with thee to be praised. Oh, you are Alpha and Omega. We worship you, my love. You are with thee to be praised. You are the Alpha. You are Alpha and Omega. Yes, we worship you, Lord. Yes, we worship you, Lord. You are. So we give you honor. Honor, honor, glory. Yes, we worship you, Lord. We worship you, Lord. Yes, you are with thee. Yes, we give you honor. Honor, honor, glory. Jesus, Lord, we worship you. We worship you, Lord. You are with thee to be praised. You are the Alpha and Omega. You are Alpha and Omega. Yes, we worship you, Lord. Honor. You are with thee to be praised. You are the Alpha and Omega. You are, you are the Alpha. Yes, we worship you, Lord. Yes, we worship you, Lord. You are with thee, with thee to be praised. Yes, we give you honor. Honor, honor, glory. Yes, we worship you, Lord. My love, you are with thee to be praised. In the same time, in the same, same time. So there's this church, the bride is room to meet her. In the same time, in the same, same time. Oh, so there's this church, the bride is room to meet her. Yes, she's taken up, taken up. Yes, taken up. Oh, yeah, the mystery. Oh, history going. Oh, of that same mercy. Yes, she's taken up, taken up. Yes, she's taken up, taken up. Oh, yeah, the mystery. Oh, history going. Oh, of that same mercy. This is my desire to honor you. And Lord, with all my heart, I worship you. Yes, Lord, all I have within me and all I have within, I give you praise. And all that I adore, all that I adore is in you. Lord, I give you my heart. Lord, I give you my heart. Lord, I give you my heart. I give you my soul. Yes, I live for you, Jesus. For you, I do every breath, every moment. Lord, have your way in me. Lord, I give you my heart. I give you my soul. I live for you, Lord. Every breath, every moment, my way in me. Hallelujah, Lord, have your way in me this afternoon. Lord, I give you my heart. I surrender my heart to you this afternoon. I pour out my soul before thee, oh Lord. I am like Hannah this afternoon. Oh, hallelujah, your handmaid is not drunk, but I have poured out my soul before the Lord. Hallelujah, you can pour out your soul before the Lord this afternoon. Amen, hallelujah. Oh, glory to God, amen. I surrender to you everything, everything. Everything I give to you withholding nothing. Withholding, I am withholding nothing. Holding nothing. I surrender, I surrender to you. It's everything, everything. I give to you withholding nothing. I'm withholding nothing. So I give myself away, self away. Oh, Lord, Lord, I give myself away. So you, you carry you. I give myself, give myself away. Give myself away to you, Lord. Yes, Lord, I give self away. So you carry you. I say yes, Lord, I say yes. I say yes, Lord, I say yes. To your spirit, Lord, I say yes. Yes, yes, God. I say yes, God. I say, I say yes to your right, God. I say yes, I say yes, I say yes. Yes, yes, God. Mo yawami utiyebo, utiyebo, o utiye, yebo. Mo yawami utiye, utiyebo, utiyebo, kosiya. Mo yawami, miuti, utiyebo, utiyebo, yebo. Mo yawami utiye, utiyebo, utiyebo, kosiya. My soul say yes, my soul say, say yes, say yes. Say yes, oh Lord, I say yes to your will. Say yes, say yes, oh to your will. My soul say yes, say yes, say yes, say yes, Lord. I say amen, yes. My soul say, say yes, say yes to your will. Oh, mo yawami, mo yawami, utiyebo, utiyebo, yebo. Mo yamutiye, utiyebo, utiyebo, kosiya. Oh, mo yawami, mo yawami, utiyebo, utiyebo, yebo. Mo yawami utiye, utiyebo, utiyebo, kosiya. Oh, I say yes, I say yes, I say yes, Lord. I say yes, 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 God. I say yes, Lord, I say yes. I say yes, Lord, say yes. I say yes, I say yes, yes. Hallelujah, amen. Glory to Jesus, amen. Oh, hallelujah, amen. Let's worship him this afternoon, amen. Amen, as we ask our brother Bernard to come and open for us in the way of prayer. Our brother Bernard Makana, we can just sing that chorus again. I say yes, I say yes, I say yes. I say yes, Lord, I say yes. Oh, yes, yes, Lord. I say yes, Lord, I say yes. I say yes, I say yes. Hallelujah, let's bow our heads and pray. My dear heavenly Father, we thank you this afternoon, Lord, for another opportunity to come into your presence. Thank you, Lord, for having set aside this time, oh God, to commune with us, Lord. Come, dear Lord Jesus, under expectation, as we join together to sing songs of praise and worship to thee, Lord. We know your word says you dwell in the praises of your people. Dear God, we want to invite you, Lord Jesus, that you come in our midst, oh God, not only in our midst, but to dwell in our hearts, oh God. Dear Lord, that you worship you from within us, Lord. We grateful, Lord, for the grace that you've extended unto us to bring us, Lord, further when we are lost, Lord, when we are aliens, oh God, to bring us into this family of God. We thank you, Lord Jesus. Help us, Lord Jesus, just to forget about everything, Lord, and to just get lost, Lord, in worship and in praise to thee, oh God. We invite your Holy Spirit, oh God, may you come and anoint the musicians, oh God, anoint the song leader, may anoint your congregation, oh God. We desire, dear Lord Jesus, that our hearts, Lord, be well prepared, oh God, as bed and ground, oh God, so that when your word comes, it finds a good place, oh God, that it will produce after its kind. Be with us, oh Jesus, we invite you, Lord, to pray for all those who still on their way, Lord, when they come under expectation, oh God, when they all come, Lord, under the same anointing, oh Lord. Prepare us, Lord, as we humbly submit ourselves to thee in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
Your things are being declared. I know very soon I'll be raptured out of fear. The angel of God is here leading our souls into. Invisible, inotable, inconceivable. Faith to believe, what is possible. Hold up in this year. So your things, your things are being declared. Oh, I know very soon I'll be raptured out of fear. The angel of God is here. Our souls into. Invisible, inotable, inconceivable. Faith to believe, what is possible. Hold up in this year. Oh, noth, oh noth, oh noth, you keep them up. I'm determined, they'll declare my prayer. Wosam, wosam, you hold not pick. For these people, I fought for my share. Oh, noth, oh noth, you keep them up. I'm determined, they'll declare my prayer. Wosam, 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 oh noth pick. For these people, I've fought for my share. Eh, 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 oh. So your things, your things are being declared. Yes, I know very soon, very soon I'll be raptured out of fear. Yes, the angel of God is here. Leading our souls into. That's invisible, inotable, inconceivable. Faith to believe, what is possible. Oh, in this year. So your things, brother, your things are being declared. I know very soon I'll be raptured out of fear. The angel of God is here right now. Yes, leading our souls. Angel, they're invisible. Yes, hallelujah. Faith to believe, what is possible. Oh, yes, in this year. So your things, sister, your things are being declared. I know very soon I'll be raptured out of fear. Charadofia, the angel of God is here. Leading our souls, yes. Souls into. Invisible, inotable, inconceivable. Faith to declare the impossible. Hallelujah. Possible, oh, in this year. Hallelujah, amen. Oh, faith to declare the impossible. Hallelujah, that faith has been unleashed, amen. That anointing has been unleashed, amen. To believe the impossible, not to look at your symptoms, but to believe God, because he said it. I believe it, amen, hallelujah. Oh, glory to Jesus, amen. Hallelujah, amen, amen. As we collect our tithes and offerings, let's just sing this song. I'm sure you know this song. Got any rivers, you think are impossible. Hallelujah. Got any mountains you can't tunnel through this afternoon. Our God specializes in things thought of men as impossible. Amen, is a God of the paradoxes, amen. Be of good courage, good speaker, and true judgment. We don't believe, God put it that way. Jordan and Gosebo. Jordan and God. Things seem impossible. Hallelujah, yes. It's fine as day. Got any rivers, brother, continue. Fast you take, got any mountains that you can't. My God specializes. God specializes. And it's not impossible. Oh, yes, and he will too. Beto's twin. Beto's twin, Beto to him. They would betwixt the hour. Jericho swallows must fall to the ground. Hallelujah. Must fall to the. God never failed. God never failed. He stood overcome. Walls that crumble. Walls that crumble. It's never. Got any river. Oh, yes. Unpossible. Got any mountains, sister, that you can't. My God specializes. Yes. Totally possible. Oh, yes, and he will too. No other path. God is the same. God is the same. In his greatest defense. He will make a way through the waters for you. Through the water. Life situations by him are amenable. Life situation by him. Mountains and hills he'll part for you too. Hallelujah. Yes, God turn the river. Yes, that you think. Do you have any mountains to ride? Give me these. Mountains you can. My God specializes. God specializes. Yes. Totally possible. Oh yes, and he will do. What no other path. Oh, God turn the rivers, brother. Yes, you think. God turn the mountains, yes. God turn the mountains you can't handle. Yes, specializes. God specializes. And it's not impossible. Oh yes, and he will do. What no other path is to. When we walk, get to heaven. What it takes, what free choice, that you be. That you be when we all. When we all see Jesus. Yes. Will you sing? Angel the victory. Sing the wondrous song. Oh yes, sing the wondrous love of Jesus. Sing his mercy, get his grace. In the mansions, in the armor, that are bright and blessed. Oh yes, you prepare the place. Prepare for us the place. Yes, when we all, when we all. Get to, get to heaven, what it takes. That you be when we all. See Jesus, we'll see. Angel the victory. Yet while we walk. While we walk, the view greep. Yes, clouds will overspread the sky. Overspread. But when the traveling days are over. Oh, but we traveling Jesus. Know the shadow, know the sign. Oh yes, Jesus. Oh, when we all, when we all. Get to heaven. Oh yes, what it takes, what free choice, that you be. That you be when we all. See Jesus. Oh, we'll see. Angel the victory. Hallelujah, amen. Amen. Let's sing. The great feast in her. Is she the same. See Jesus. Oh, he speaks that. Big heart, good cheer. Oh, yeah, love for so much. Oh, sweetest note, sweetest note. Is she the sweetest name, yes. Is there. Oh, God, the heart. Sweetest carol, sweetest. Carohe evasa. Jesus, Jesus, please bless him. Your many sins are all forgiven. Your many sins, your many sins. Yes, I will forgive. Receive your pardon, amen. Hallelujah. Hear the voice of Jesus. Go on your way, amen. Yes, go on your way. Yes, in peace to heaven. Where your crowd rejoice. Wake up. Yes, sweetest. That's the sweetest note, sweetest. Oh, is she. Oh, sweetest name, sweetest. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, the heart. Sweetest carol, sweetest. Carohe evasa. Jesus, Jesus, please bless him. His name dispels my guilt and fear. His name, his name dispels my guilt and fear. No other name but Jesus. Other name but he. Oh, how my soul delight to hear that name. Oh, how my soul delight in that. I too. That shining charming name of Jesus, amen. Oh, yes. Ebor she. Oh, sweetest note, sweetest. Yes, yes, sweetest. Sweetest name, sweetest. Yes, oh, oh, oh. Sweetest carol, sweetest. Carohe evasa. Jesus, she. We used to sing it like this, amen. In Shona, we used to sing it like this. She would say, say, Tairo. Say, Tara. Rakana. Ake. Venuti pa'oli. Inoti. Te'paru. Oh, faru. Borva. Kisa. Jesus. Is he. Lipi eli ni kama la, amen. Oh, lipieli. Eli ni kama la. Yes, it's in the soil. Yes, it's in the soil. No na ali ko ali. Eli ni kama la. Eli ka Jesueli. Eli ka che Jesu lo. Oh, sweetest note, sweetest. Hallelujah. Serasho, sweetest name. Oh. Oh, the heart. Sweetest carol, sweetest. Carohe evasa. Jesus, he. See Jesus. Hallelujah. Amen, glory to Jesus, amen. Oh, we worship you, Lord, this afternoon, amen. They will. Ne na pa'chimpa. They will. With what na ko. When the holy ghost is sent. He was from this. Ah, what. Oh, hallelujah. Oh, oh, Lord. Send a power. Oh, send a power. Oh, Lord. Send a power. Just. Hallelujah. Oh, Lord. Send a power. Just. Yes, in baptism. Even. Yes, this power from heaven descended. Oh, is this power from heaven. Jesus. With the sound of a rushing mighty wind. Yes, with a sound of a. Tongues of fire came on them. Oh, tongues of fire came to. Upon. Yes, is the Lord. Said he was. Oh, hallelujah. Oh, oh, Lord. Send a power. Just. Oh, Lord. Send a power. Just. Hallelujah. Oh, Lord. Send a power. Just. Yes, in baptism. Send. Yes, this old time powers give it to our fathers who are true. Yes, this old time power was given. To our fathers who are true. To our fathers who are. This is promised to all believers today, amen. This is from Jesus. And we all may have it too. Yes, and we all may have it. Oh, hallelujah. Oh, oh, Lord. Send a power. Just. Hallelujah. Oh, Lord. Send a power. Just. Hallelujah. Oh, Lord. Send a power. Oh, eh, baptism. See free. Oh, hallelujah. Oh, oh, Lord. Send a power. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Oh, Lord. Send a power. Just. Hallelujah. Oh, Lord. Send a power. Just. Oh, eh, baptism. See free. Hallelujah. Praise this wonderful name. Hallelujah, let's just bow heads and just close our eyes. Look to this great altar and finisher of our faith. How wonderful to know that he is here amongst us. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Our great Redeemer, our great Maker. He's right here amongst us, he gave that great promise that he'll be. Hallelujah. Amongst his children, where two or three are gathered, he'll be there in their midst. Those that are gathered in his name, we are more than two, we are more than three, and we're not gathered in some man's name, but we are gathered in the name of the living God, the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Hallelujah. Have faith, my brothers and sisters. Have faith in his word. All things are possible. Hallelujah. Let's just pray together, let's just talk to him. Say, Lord, I'm expecting from you, Lord. Lord, I'm expecting the dove to fly down, to come fluttering into my heart, oh God. The Bible says, be not afraid. Have faith, have faith in God. Hallelujah. Father, we thank you this afternoon. Oh God, to come in your presence, Lord, realizing that the hour has arrived, Father. And that this is home going time. That the rapture is upon us, oh God. And that you're doing everything to get us ready for that great takeoff, Father. And Lord, we can see the landscape changing. We can see the hour changing. We can see the scene changing. Father, we can see the time changing. We can see the conditions changing. We can see demon powers moving in, Father. We can see it's such a shaking time. So many things have been shaken down. So many people have fallen apart in this hour, Lord. So many people have been tossed to and fro. So many people are shipwrecked, oh God. We see the spirit of fear, the spirit of bondage overtaking so many good people, oh God. But dear Lord Jesus, in the hour of desperation, Father. Hallelujah, Lord. In the hour, Lord, when it looks like the devil is going to destroy everything. You gave a great promise. You gave a great promise that you'll ride this trail one more time, Father. You'll ride this trail one more time, Lord. And we'll see that seven seal, Christ himself, coming, walking on the water, coming with a message of identification, calling us, Father, into a higher level. Higher level of faith, oh God, for this great promise, Father. That we could see manifested in our lives what we saw in the life of the Son of Man, Father. What we saw in the life of the Son of Man, oh God, must be made manifest in our life, oh God. How can we not have these things, oh God, when we believe in the Son of Man, oh God? When we, when we take his word, Father? When we do everything in his name, Lord Jesus? When we dress, Lord, when we gather together, everything is done in his name, in the name of the Son of Man? Then, Lord, we should have all these things amongst us. Oh, help us tonight, sweet Jesus. Father, I pray that we may break through every barrier. May we bring every thought into captivity. May divine revelation strike the inner man. May we cast down reasoning. May we cast down imagination. May we pull down the strongholds. May we bring every thought into captivity, into obedience of Christ. Oh God, as we sit under your holy presence. Let that word come forth with precision. Let that word come forth with the Holy Ghost accuracy. Let it come forth, Lord, like a guided missile, Lord. May it go deep down into our hearts, Lord. In those needy places of our hearts, dear Lord Jesus. May it break every. May it break every spirit of fear and bondage. And may we receive, Father, the spirit of love and power and of a sound mind, dear God. Help us is our humble prayer, Lord. You've been good to us, oh God. We've seen, Lord, such a majestic outpouring of your spirit, oh God. Dealing with your people in such a mighty way, oh God. Elevating their faith, Lord. We thank you, oh God, for your beloved servant, our brother Lloyd Chenamasa, that is amongst us. That has preached so faithfully, that has availed himself, oh God, to your leadership. To help your sons and daughters, oh God. We want to hold him up one more time before you, Lord. Asking your blessings, Father, upon him, as he would once again stand behind the sacred desk, oh God. Speak through him, oh God. That's the only avenue you have, oh God, is to speak through man, oh God. This is the hour, oh God, when your word, he's been made flesh, oh God. Your great descending, oh God, was to become flesh, not in the corporal body. But, Lord, in the flesh of man, to be veiled in man, so that the Son of Man could be revealed, oh God. That's what we believe, oh God. And we believe, oh God, that he was that wave sheaf that was waved over the entire Omega Church, showing others to come up, just like the Son of Man, doing the same things, Lord. Help us, Father, as we healed ourselves to you, as we surrender ourselves to you. May you have the full leading, Father, and the full oversight in everything that is going to be said and done. Have your way with us, deal with us, Lord, do what you need to do, Father. And we wait in readiness, oh God. We commit the service into your hands now, in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, for your glory and for your honor. Amen and amen. Hallelujah! Amen, we greet you whilst you are standing, we're not going to be just a moment. We greet you in the wonderful name of our Lord Jesus Christ. We welcome you in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, we're happy to see every one of you. There are many pastors here, we just salute you in the name of the Lord. Happy to see every one of you and the people that have come along with you, may the Lord just richly bless you, amen. This is our last service with our pastor, Brother Chenamasa. Hallelujah, he leaves for Zimbabwe tomorrow morning at twenty to seven, flying directly into Harapri. We have had a wonderful time. We've had a really wonderful, wonderful time. Hallelujah! On Tuesday, we started at Pastor Denzel's place there. And he, our brother had spoken on the unlimited power in man. And then on Wednesday, with Brother Adrian out there in Phoenix, contending for the faith. And then on Thursday, around the corner here at Eagle Tabernacle, the short restoration of all things. Hallelujah! And then Friday night, we were here, he had spoken on returning to God to the point of origin. And then on Saturday, we were in Ankumaz with Pastor Chris. We are the, we are the body of Christ members in particular. Praise his wonderful name. And today was the continuation in the book of Acts. And his subtitle was, subtitle was, putting the word in action. Hallelujah! Putting the word in action. Are you under expectation? Hallelujah! So let's just bow our heads and bow our hearts, close our eyes, with nobody looking around. As we change the order of the service and ask our precious brother to come and minister to us. Humble thyself, hallelujah. And he'll lift you up, humble yourself before him, before his great presence. Hallelujah! Thank you, Lord. Hallelujah! Hallelujah!
Humble yourself before the Lord. He will lift you up. Oh, my brother, if you humble yourself before the Lord. He will lift you up.
He will lift you.
He will lift you.
He will lift you. If you only.
Humble yourself before the Lord. He will lift you up. He will lift you. He will lift you up. He will lift you. He will lift you up. If you only. Say, oh, oh, he will lift you up. Oh, my sister, if you humble yourself before the Lord. He will lift you up.
Let us pray. Precious Lord Jesus, we thank you. We thank you for bringing us back again to the house of prayer. And we come humbly even before your presence. Lord God and the Father, knowing very well that, oh God, if we do our part, you are more than able to fulfill your word in our lives. Bless us, Lord God and the Fathers, you promised that where two or three are gathered together in my name, I'll be there in their midst. We don't doubt your presence. We don't doubt you, oh God and the Father, to fulfill everyone with your promises. Bless your children who have come, all the sacrifices that have been made, the scriptures that shall be read, heavenly Father, the preaching of the word. We thank you. As we commit the rest of the whole service this afternoon into your blessed hands in Jesus' name, amen. Amen, Shalom, you may take your seats for a while. Greetings once again, in the precious name of the Lord Jesus Christ. The projector is still working. So if God hears, the Bible says, whom the Son of Man shall set free, will be free indeed. I want to appreciate you, Pastor Chris Naido, God bless you. Pastor Denzel, God bless you. Are you the one there? God bless you, wonderful. And all the pastors that are here, God bless you, precious brother. We love you all, we appreciate you. Thank you so much for the invitation, for opening your doors. We really enjoyed fellowship around the table of God's word. May God keep you with that good heart all the time. You're such a lovely people. And we were left with no option than just to love you because of your love, your hearts and everything there. The saints, God bless you all. And we want to appreciate the pastor once again, his wife and the family for their love towards us. May the good Lord bless them richly. This is our last service for now together. Tomorrow, we'll be leaving very early in the morning. And tomorrow, by this time, we'll be home playing with the kids. So we, we appreciate the Lord. Brother James, God bless you, we love you. And all of you, let us just stand to our feet, we don't want to take much time, we want to go straight to the word of the Lord. I didn't finish what I wanted to, to preach in the morning, but we don't preach to finish. I didn't read the quotations that I wanted to read, but I believe your message, people. You, you know all these quotations, you know the Bible. And you, you don't doubt what is said to be the message of the hour. As much as the Bible says, prove all things. Which we, it's our duty, everyone of us, to do that, to prove everything by the Bible, by the message of the hour, by the Spirit. We must be people who are vigilant, as the Bible says. But I wouldn't want to come here as a hypocrite and say something which is out of the Bible. I, I would want to do that. If I ever come to that point, please remember to pray for me. Amen. Let us take our Bibles and read. Then I will let you down to take your seats. We will start with. Let's go to a very common scripture, Hebrews chapter 11. Then we go to John chapter 14. We want to read from verse five and six of Hebrews, chapter 11. The Bible says, by faith, Inoc was translated that he should not see death and was not found because God had translated him. For before his translation, he had this testament, that he pleased God. But without faith, it is impossible to please him, for he that come unto God must believe that he is. And that is a reward of those, of them that diligently seek him. Let's come to John 14 to call off. The Bible says, very, very, I say unto you, ye that believeth on me, the works that I do shall he do also, and greater works than these shall he do, because I go unto my Father. You may take your seats, God bless you richly. So I will just start to finish a bit of, just to highlight what I wanted to say in the morning about the acts of the Holy Spirit. I wanted to share a few quotations about the prophet. When we were talking about the time, there's time for everything and all that. There's this place that the prophets visited, I think it was by vision when he went to this place. And as he got to that door there, there was a woman, I think she was weeping. And he heard a man say, bye doc, and he got into the car there, then he drove away. Then he went to the door where there was a woman and he said, you have got a sick baby, sick child, isn't it? Then she said, yes. And then she said again, are you a doctor? Then he said, no, I'm not a doctor, I'm a minister of the gospel, but do you have a sick child? Then he, she said, yes, I have, and he got inside there. She was, she took, I think it was a Bible or something, put it somewhere. And there was a woman to come in a red sweater and all that. Then after all was done, the prophet took out. He went down until he got to this ten cent store where he was there. He had seen a vision of a clock which was on the wall there. And he was told by the vision that when the clock comes to ten to three, you go outside, there'll be men there walking. What was it? That was the acts of the Holy Spirit. So I, I thought I could have time to share all those quotations and all that. How the Holy Ghost is very simple and so accurate and direct, and we must be people. The Bible says, those that are led by the Spirit are the sons of God. Then he went outside and he saw this man there, reading his Bible, and he was in tears, I think. Then he says, how do you do? And the man said, I'm fine. Then he says, do you believe that book that you are picking there? And I know all of you there, you're picking Bibles, isn't it? And the man said, yes, I do. Then he said, have you ever read in there? Not from my Bible, but from your Bible, have you ever read in there, in your Bible? How many of you got Bibles with them? Have you ever read in there, where Jesus heals the sick? Have you ever read in there, where Jesus gives the baptism of the Holy Spirit? Have you ever read in there, where the Lord performs miracles? Have you ever read in there, where it says, shall come to pass in the last days that upon my spirit, upon all flesh, your sons and daughters, shall prophesy, young men shall see visions? Have you ever read in there? It's your Bible that you are picking. It's, I, I never called you to come with your Bible, but I'm saying, have you ever read in there? It's your Bible, isn't it? Have you ever read? In there? Then the man said, yes. Then the prophet said, therefore, in the name of Jesus Christ, rise up and walk. Then he looked at the nurse, he said, look here. The nurse said, he can't walk. Then he says, sir, you take me at my word. Don't look at the nurse. The nurse had been pushing your, your wheelchair for some time, could not help you. I said, you take me at my word. Look here, he said, in the name of Jesus Christ. Then the man said, who are you? He said, that doesn't matter. Rise up! Then he stood and the prophet disappeared. They wrote mystic healing, but it was not mystic. There was a man there. Then he speaks about a place where he went, Mila's Cuff Tailor. There's a woman, a sister, who had sold the cow and everything and the money for their last booking there. Then she said she was praying the whole night. Then in the morning, she tried to sleep, to take a nap, and she dreamed. And the Holy Spirit said, go to a place called Mila's Cuff Tailor at nine o'clock. Then Brother Branham was just moving from somewhere. He told his wife, he said, honey, let's go this way, let's go this way. Being led by the Holy Spirit. And he gets to Mila Cuff Tailor. They ordered their food. As he started giving thanks, he heard somebody saying, praise the Lord. How many have come across that quotation? Put it, brother, just type Mila's Cuff Tailor. Then he says, praise the Lord. Then he lifted his head like that, and the woman began to narrate the story. Then the wife, Brother Branham's wife, and this sister, who was a nurse there, said, we told you that you'll be rounded up here and will not come out. He says, it's the leadership of the Holy Spirit. And she explained the story. Mila is M-I-double-L-E. Then just type cuff, cuff tailor there. Then, did you find it? I can bring you, I can bring you the quotation. I, I don't want to preach on that. Did you find it? It's in the message, expectation, the, the working of the Holy Spirit, let me come and give you. Yes, it starts on one morning, there is paragraph what? Paragraph forty-five down there, which says, one morning, we was going down a couple mornings. Down a couple mornings after that, I had my coat up like this. Not as if I didn't want to meet the dear people, but it's such a pool. I was just about gone, and I was going down the street, Miss Mark Morgan, next, was speaking. Of she usually goes to many meetings to help keep the patients lined up. And then I was going along through there, and I was walking down towards Toto House. And the Holy Spirit said to me, turn to your left. The Lord said, let's go this way, said, here is the place. I said, let's go this way through. The angel of the Lord tells me to go here. We walked on down the street a little piece, there was a place up there, said Mila Cuff Tailor, something said, go in here. They that are led by the Spirit of God, you know what I'm speaking of, leading. And I went in, my wife was with me, and we had our little girl, and I sat down at the table. I had some prune and a couple of orange juice or something. I sat down, just asked the blessing. When I raised up, I heard somebody say, praise God. Where are you? Are we together? Which message are you? Expectation, that's right. Forty-five, then go down a bit. Right, after forty-five, as you go down. Let's go. Okay, did you find where I was reading? Okay, go to forty-five. Let's see what it says. Forty-five starts by saying, in Fort Wayne. So you're in the wrong book. In Fort Wayne, they found out what hotel we was in. Let's see the year, fifty zero eight ten. Yeah, you're in the wrong message. Fifty, preach nineteen fifty, August ten. You will never find it if you're in the wrong message. It's expectations. Nineteen fifty zero eight. Nineteen fifty zero eight ten, paragraph forty-five. I don't know which is the first way to search. But wording can give you the right. Did you find it? Let's quickly, because that's not what I'm preaching about. But yeah, let's go down now. Scroll your things up. Then let's go to forty-six, that's where I was. I had come to forty-six. "And then I was going along through there, and I was walking down towards..." Are you there? Yeah? Yes. "And I was going toward Toto House, and the Holy Spirit said to me, 'Turn to your left.' The Lord..." I said, "Let's go this way," said, "Here is the place." I said, "Let's go this way, though. The angel of the Lord tells me to go here." We walked on down the street a little piece. There was a place up there, I said, "Mila's Cuff Tailor." Something said, "Go in here." They that are led by the Spirit of God, you know what I'm speaking of, leading. "And I went in, my wife was with me, and we had our little girl. And I sat down at the table, I had some prunes and a cup of orange juice or something. I sat down to just ask the blessing. When I raised up, I heard somebody say, 'Praise God.'" Do you see that? I looked over the side, Mrs. Morgan said, "Now, I told you if we went there, said, they didn't know where you was going to be." And I said, "Sister Maggie, this is the Spirit of the Lord. He never sends me falsely." "And my wife said to her, 'It's the Spirit.'" She walked over there, she said, "Brother Branham?" I said, "Yes." She started crying. I took her by the hand and I said, "I know that you want me for something." She said, "Yes, my brother." Said, "Brother Branham, we have sold our possessions. We have, we had cows, we had a little place, and we sold it. And we followed for about six or seven meetings." How many meetings have you followed? Or somebody caught it already? You know, this is unconscious. Yeah, six or seven meetings. Said, "My brother, in such a place, his heart is there, there frame said, has come out." I said, "It's getting worse and worse and worse," said. She spent everything, much money, said. "We just from meeting to meeting, tried to get in. We got prayer cards and got almost to the line thing, to be turned down, and missed his spot, and we couldn't understand it," said. "He just fought right on, held on, said, 'All our money is gone,' said, 'We have just about three dollars left,' said, 'Last night, I prayed all night long,' said, 'I've been fasting, so our man would hold us out to the end of the meeting,' and said, 'We just paid our hotel room,' and said, 'This morning, about four o'clock,' said, 'The Lord woke me up in a dream,' and said, 'Go down to Mila Cuff Tailor at nine o'clock and stand there.'" "Go there, I believe, in church, in Dublin City, and stand there! You sit there! Go there!" She was in prayer all night! "And we have left praying all night. We are not yet in problem. When you are really in a fix, are you not wait for the pastor to announce a prayer meeting? You have your own, and the Lord will come down to your house and will tell you what to do." Auntie Jamaima prayed all night. Early in the morning, she was told, "Go and stand by the gate. Your Elijah is coming right there." And she stood there with a shadow or something right around her head. And she stood there for hours, brother, standing there, meditating, standing there, praying in her heart in the spirit, waiting for a man that she had never seen, waiting for a preacher to come her way, as the Lord has promised her after prayer. She stood there, and it caused the aeroplane to develop the problem, which was never there. She grounded it down. She grounded the plane for Elijah to step out of the plane. Then she stood there, and the pilot was having, started having a hard time. And as for emergence landing. Ah, you can cause an emergence landing. You can cause an emergence landing. You can cause trouble in the skies. You can cause chaos here. Ah, come on church, come on sister! We are looking for real eagles, real believers that can cause trouble in the meetings. You remember the Mexican woman? She caused trouble in church, came with a dirty baby. She came when prayer cards were given. She came, there she stood, she was holding the baby and waited the water dripping down. She said, "I need my prayer card." And Brother Billy Paul says, "The prayer card I already given, no more prayer cards." She said, "I want to get to the preacher." Yes, she. And Billy Paul said, "You can't get to the preacher. The people go by order." She broke the church order. That day she broke the church order because of a fader. Real fader can cause commotion. Real fader can divert a preacher to turn off from his notes. And she started, and she was everywhere. The deacons tried to hold her. She was right between the legs of deacons with her baby. Said, "Sister, what kind of a sister are you?" She was everywhere. She wanted to go right to the platform. Then Billy Paul says, "Ah, you can beat us." But here we have got an order, said, "Daddy, be careful. There's a woman here causing havoc." Daddy, be careful. There's a woman here causing trouble. Then the prophet said, "Brother, this sister doesn't know me. You go and pray a prayer of consolation." But God said, "No! When somebody believes, it's not a prayer of consolation. No, I don't need a consolation prayer. I need a perfect gift to come directly to my situation. I have been comforted by the doctor. I have been given consolation before. I want the resurrection of my baby." "Don't go home with a bad daddy baby. Don't go home with a sick baby. Don't go back home with a sick child. Don't go back home with a sick child. Don't go back home with a sick baby. Don't go back home with a sick husband. Don't go back with a sick wife, with a sick wife, sick wife." "Don't go back home with a sick wife. Don't go back home with a daddy baby." "The temperature must come back to normal. The baby's temperature must come back to normal. The fever must leave the child, the fever must leave your body." "As this brother was going to pray, God said, 'When did you become a hypocrite? When did you start to be a hypocrite?' The vision came. Brother Branham saw a baby smiling. Said, "Brother, come back." "Billy, prayer card or no prayer card? Let here come! I have seen a vision." "And the baby came back to life. If it was you, the moment the doctor says, 'We are sorry,' you start to cry. And you hand over the baby back to the doctor to take them to the mouches." "Let us bury after we have prayed." "I said, 'Let us bury after we have prayed.'" "Let us go to the hospital after we have prayed." Sometimes you not go to the hospital. I don't know why we get to that. "The Lord woke me up in the dream and said, 'Go down to Mila Cuff Tailor at nine o'clock, and be sitting there.'" Nine o'clock, precise. Oh God, I looked at my watch, it was just exactly nine o'clock. This woman was not a prophet, neither a prophetess. This woman was a believer. So the Holy Ghost doesn't work on prophets only. The Holy Ghost works on believers. I said, "The Holy Ghost works on the body, a body of believers, on Christian people." "Oh mine, the Spirit of the Lord upon me. I lay the hands upon the brother, his heart is straightened out like that." "Instantly the people begin screaming. I slipped out and went on out like that, and went outside the building. While they were rejoicing there, just as I went out the door, there was another lady who was told to stand outside at ten past nine." "God is not the heart of confusion. One woman was told to be in the restaurant, nine o'clock exactly. And God knew it was going to take ten minutes to deal with this other sister. Ah, come and receive your ten minutes. You don't need one hour in the house of God. We don't need three hours. You only need five minutes in the presence of the pillar of fire. You come out a different man." "Just as I went out the door, there was a lady from Chicago dressed in her fine young dress, fell on the street. Oh Jesus, thank you." I said, "Stand up, sister." She crumbled and got me by the side, side of the coat. Don't be slow, brother. She said, "Oh Brother Branham, I've been dying," said with cancer. She said in such a horrible fix, and said, "I couldn't go on, I know. I can't live but a few days. Saint Mayo has turned me down and everything great, big malignant and that. I can't, it can't be done. When my clothes are so tight, said, I just couldn't go ahead further." And said, "I prayed, and the Lord told me this morning in a dream to be at Mila Cuff Tailor on the outside at ten minutes after nine." And there was, oh my, hallelujah! Ah, come on, brother. That Holy Ghost, that same Holy Spirit that lets Simeon in the morning to go to the Tappan Eko, that same Holy Ghost, that same power is here in the building today. With such precision. Then he began, after he prayed for this one, the Holy Ghost said, "Keep on going. There's someone believing somewhere. Keep on going. Someone have got faith. Keep on going." And he kept on going. He got to a place, he was told to stand here. And there was a policeman controlling the traffic. He stood there. And there was a sister who was sold down. Then the prophet stood there for some minutes. He didn't know why. You keep on going, I think you will come to that place, or we will find it in another message. Then he stood there, and the police was listening or something there. Then the Holy Spirit told him that there's something with that sister. And that sister was just walking. Then she passed. Then the prophet said, "What? But God is not a liar." Within some second, that sister stood, stopped, turned. Said, "Oh Brother Branham, if you can believe your desire, God will send your desire right there where you are. If you can believe, God can bring someone from America to fulfill your desire, if thou can believe." "The policeman became the usher, and the prayer was run in the street because of one woman." "You have the answer to the Dublin people." So this, this was for the morning. Let's come to the service now. But we can also close, isn't it? You see how the Holy Ghost works? But you have a part in it. You have a part. You must be able to control and operate divine gifts. There are gifts there. You need faith to operate them. I told you in the morning that you need to be a little bit frantic. Don't sit like you're in an office or you're in a plane. Jump up and down like the brother. Let's come back to our scriptures. "Very, very, I say unto you: ye that believeth in me, the works that I do shall he do also." I'm talking tonight on the climax of our faith. Faith can reach a climax. You can believe God until you come to the dead end of it all. You can believe God so much until you can do everything, until you say, "Where I have reached it to now in my ministry, I can't go further." That's your prophet Malachi four. He came to a point where he reached a point. He comes back and he says to the church, "Where I have reached it to in my ministry, I can't go further than this." How many have seen that quotation? Type it, I think it's the message, "Why Christ speak or look away to Jesus." "Where I have reached it to in my ministry, I can't go any further." And I agree with that. The prophet came to the limit of all what is called supernatural. He came to the limit of all what is called the operation of the Holy Spirit. He came to the limit of the express of faith. You talk of Daniel in the den of lions, and he was not eaten. You talk of the prophet there. "In Philippians 1:26, I give you dominion. That man who was created in the beginning was not a weakling man, was not a failure, was not a sickling. That man had power, had dominion over the beast of the field, had dominion over the fowls of the air, could do whatever he wanted with nature, the Adam of the beginning. But the end-time prophet was far beyond Adam, because Adam maybe could have changed the direction of the river, which had been created. But the prophet of the generation stood there and said, as he was meditating upon Mark 11, as he was thinking upon Mark 11, as he was meditating, John 14:12, "The works I do shall you do also, and greater works than these shall you do, because I go to the Father. Greater works in my name shall you cast out devils; in my name shall you preach; in my name shall you pray for the sick." And John 14 says, "Ye that believeth in me, and believeth in me, the works that I do shall he do also." And Paul says in the book there of Hebrews 11, "Without faith it is impossible to please God, for he that come unto God must believe that he is." God is the Savior. Ye that come unto God, ye that come unto church, you must come to church believing that I'm going to receive my healing in church. I'm going to receive my Holy Ghost. I'm going to receive my portion. Ye that come unto God must believe that he is, and he's a reward of those that diligently, not just one day. Inoc walked with God. Inoc was translated, but before his translation, before his change of the body, he had a testament. What was the testament? Pleading God. Why? Because he believed in God so much, until God took him, he was not found among the drunkards, was not found among the doubters, was not found among the prostitutes, was not found among the liars, was not found among the unbelievers. Inoc was translated, but before his translation, before the rapture, before he had changed, you must have a testament. before he had changed, you must have a testimony. Before you are changed, you must have a testimony. Before the resurrection morning, you must have a testimony. Before the second coming of Jesus Christ, you must have a testimony. A sure testimony to please God, a pleasing testimony like Inoc of old, who was the seventh, and we come in this seventh church age today. After the creation of squirrels, what more could he do? After raising the dead, what more could he do? After opening the blind eyes, what more could he do? After raising the cripple, right here in the rest course, seventeen trucks with one player. There was a commotion like in the valley of the dry bones when Ezekiel was there. I want to tell you brother, we have received more than in the days of Ezekiel. We have received more than in the days of Jeremiah. For God in sundry times spoke to the fathers by the prophet, but yet in this day spoken to us by Jesus Christ, whom is an appointed heir of all things. We have received a man, we have received a prophet, a son of man revealing the son of man. That's far beyond Adam, brother. William Brenham never turned a river which was created. He spoke a squirrel into existence and whaled harm and ate it. Not what God has created, but what he created himself. I told you yesterday that indies stains were not even washed. They were clean. He had never drunk water or graced any grass that squirrel. All the beef and the chicken that you eat, they have eaten some chicken mesh. This squirrel was clean. It was spoken from here and came back here. Come out from the lips, came back by the same mouth. Ah, you can speak your own things. You can speak your own job. You can speak your own healing. You can speak your own campaign. Don't wait for nobody. You speak the word and go forward. Come to a declaration moment. I'm talking about the rapture becoming the climax of our faith. Having done war, the last enemy to be destroyed is dead. When this mortar will put on immortality, this corruption will put on in corruption. Then shall be brought to say death. What can we do to me? Grave, where is your victory? All men believe they are going to be changed. The Bible say we shall not all sleep. We are not all going to be buried. We are not all going to the grave. But brother, if you are not serious, you will be buried. But we shall not all sleep. We shall be changed before this mortar body is changed. Your life must receive a change. Receive the change of your life. Receive the change of your life. If you're sick, your life must receive a change. Come on brother, from sickness to good health, from poverty, from suffering to enjoying the benefits and the blessings of the redemption story. Grow in miracles, grow in healing until the perfect healing of the body will come in a moment, in that twin of an eye. That will be the climax of the healing of the toothache. That will be the climax of stretching your crippled hand. That will be the climax of the opening of your blind eyes. That will be the climax of the opening of your mouth, you speak. That will be the climax of the opening of your deaf ear. You hear perfectly until one day the whole body, not part of the body, the whole. The whole body, the complete body will be changed in a moment, in that twin of an eye. But how does it come to? Today you are healed from this, tomorrow you are healed from this. Today you are saved from this, as we're talking about Soso, a complete package to be saved spiritually and physically simultaneously. Come and receive your Soso. Receive your deliverance. Receive your Soso. Receive your complete package. Receive your redemptive package. Receive your complete blessings. And the prophet says in the message, total deliverance. He said that disciples had the total deliverance because they were absolutely filled with the Holy Ghost. Yeah, you found it, let's go down. Yeah. Let's start where it starts. Right. Let's go on forty-three maybe. And everyone knows that for a certain as the first was identified, so has the second been identified. And if you think real closely, you who are spiritual, as the Bible said, here is to him that is wisdom. The third is thoroughly properly identified. We know where it is. I don't want to talk about the third, it causes a lot of confusion among the people. I don't want to use even that word. I just want to dwell on John fourteen twelve. We don't want people who just say, we are now in the third book, speak the word, the word only. If I lay hands on you and you are healed according to Mark sixteen, is the word of God. He spoke his word and healed them there. That's still the word. If I preach from here and they are healed from where you are, is the word of God. If I give you my handkerchief and they are healed, is the word of God. If I come and pass and my shadow heals you, is the word of God. So it's all the word. So speak the word only, it means that you read the message perfectly faith. Nineteen sixty-three. He says, that's where he ran the first line and he prayed for so many people. And he was not saying so many things, he was just saying, receive your healing, Jesus, receive. Then after that, he says, all of you that have been laid hands, those that are healed, can you raise your hand, almost everyone, he said, was that? He was coming back to perfect faith. What is perfect in faith? Taking God at his word. Some that don't have faith, they want to feel like, they want to feel the pastor laying hands on them. Because these gifts of divine healing and everything will be with them right into the rapture. You don't believe it. You speak the word. You don't know what is the word. The word is from giver to keeper. You don't add, you don't subtract. Even the prophet, when he came to the dead end, he still could lay hands on the sick. But he said, it has come to a time in my ministry where I didn't have to say nothing, just being there. Within five minutes, they started packing wheelchairs and cloths. I want to ask you one question, you Deben people. Those seventeen trucks filled with wheelchairs and cloths, did he lay hands on them? What was it? It was his shadow healing all these people. Your shadow must do the same. It came a time in the ministry of Peter where he could not lay hands on them. They had to just put the sick in the streets. So that by his shadow, anyone who struck, they were healed. And the handkerchiefs were sent to people who were far off. Speak the word only is the Bible. Yes. He says in another time, it would come a time where he said, brother, I give you rain. Then he says, he said, no, I send rain to you, I'll send you rain. Just type, I'll send you rain. That's the word, isn't it? But this faith must grow, brother. From faith to... I went to a certain place the other time. There was a sister sitting by the window, we had this child, six years, a boy. And they were trying to have other children, they could not. As I was walking outside, coming to the pastor's office there. She felt the presence that penetrated the window and she began to shake. When I passed, that presence stopped. When I came, opened the minister's door, coming to the booth, that presence came and struck her. As I was preaching, she was feeling the same. Prayed for her. We went back about six months later and we saw her in a big time, said pastor. The very day that you prayed for me, that's the day that I believe I took conception. By shadow. Not to refer anything to myself. Then I gave the testimony in another church, there was another sister with a child, six years, and could not have other children. The Holy Ghost struck her and she went home, she took conception. It happened three times. Without laying hands. Oh, here it is. Let's go a little bit until, remember our quote, we want to come back. Then let's go. Genesis, yes, where are we brother? Genesis to the original, what is it now? The world and nature is groaning, crying, everything is moving. What? For the manifestation of the sons of God. When true sons are born sons, not joining. For by one spirit are we all baptized. When we are really born again. When true sons are born, filled sons, speak in their word. Is backed. I believe we are on the border of it now. And I'm talking about the climax of our faith. We are heading to that change of this body. But before we reach to the change of the body, we start from dealing with cancer. We start by missing limbs, then restored. Then we are moving forward. We are on the border. Yes, you say to this mountain, let it be loose. Brother, I desire so and so, certain thing done. I'm a believer in Christ. Let's go. I give it to you in the name of the Lord. Ah, brother, I'm thirty years, I want to be married. Receive your boyfriend in the name of Jesus. And they receive it. That's where we are. Isn't it? Now, don't come to me after this. I'm giving you the money for the Lobola and the wedding. Go and check your girlfriend's hand. I have seen it. One time I went to a certain sister, said, sister, when is your wedding? Said, ah, maybe next year. I said, okay, I'm giving you that sixth July. Within two weeks, said, what, I said, sixth July, go into the pastor and check. Think within three weeks. Went to the pastor, said pastor, I want to check if sixth July is open for my wedding. Said, how are things? Said, brother Lloyd told me to tell you. Said, if it's brother Lloyd, I'll write sixth July. And they got married, the wedding was on sixth July, in a nice place. As I was standing talking to another, I said, don't worry about rice. I'm going to provide this one, said, don't worry about this, don't worry. And the arrangements were done right there. Speak it and go forward. There's a sister who came from Zambia, forty-eight years. Said pastor, I, I, I was told some testimony. So I have come to see if these testimonies are true. I want to be married. As a sister, I believe, all things are possible. Forty-eight. If it was you, you could just say, ah, sister, just, just, just speak the word, sister. Said sister, I knew here. I'm speaking the word together with you. I prayed, I said, go back. Within three months, the brother was there. How can God fail to give you the money for Lobola when you came with the projector in the morning there? And we prayed for the projector, which was not working. He came with the projector, which was not working, to, to the office where I was studying. If you were testing my faith. You know what I said when I left there? I said, Lord, because these boys have come with this projector. You better heal that projector to work. Because if you don't, they are not going to believe me to be a man of God. The prophet was told, get the people to believe you. If you don't believe me, you are going home empty. You are wasting your time. You better pack your things and go and go and sit on the sofa where it's a bit comfortable. That's the hardest thing for a model to believe another model. Get, it's the hardest thing to get the people to believe you. They'll be looking at the height and everything. Peter said to the lamb, look on earth, bring your attention here. Then he says, silver and gold have I none. But such as I have. Where was Peter taking those words from? In Matthew ten. When Jesus called his disciples, he gave them power. Can you put Matthew ten? Ah, let's finish here, then we go to Matthew ten, remind me, let's finish. I give it to you in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. There is a manifestation, oh brother, my crops are burning up out yonder. I haven't any rain. I go home, brother, go to your field. I will send you the rain in your field in the name of the Lord God. And bless your crop. Those into farming, we bless your crops. Those into transport and logistics, we bless your vehicles. Those into properties, we bless you in the name of Jesus Christ. Yeah, you help it outside there. I'll show you where it is. If you go to at nineteen eleven. Where it speaks about miracles, isn't it? Then Corinthians twelve twenty-seven speaks of helps and governments. We want brothers that are given money by the Holy Spirit, by a gift of miracle. It ignites the gift of helps. And those gifts begin to operate. If one member suffers, all members suffer with it. If we don't have money here in the church, we will not have ten meetings. We will not have meetings. We need money to have crusade, to have ten meetings, and somebody must be adopted on that. And someone given a gift of divine healing. When we have meetings, we pray for the sick. And someone who speak in tongues, someone who interpret, someone who prophesy, someone who preach. An apostle, a car, evangelist, pastors, teachers, for the artification of the body of the church. We are in the book of Acts. I bless your business in the name of Jesus Christ. I'm not joking and I'm not meaning, I bless it! No more breakdown on the vehicles! No more breakdowns! No more nothing in the name of Jesus Christ! I've seen it happen. I went to a certain church to preach. I said, "We want to raise our own John Sharits here." Then two brothers just came, shook my hand. I said, "Go." And the other one, he was having some conduct that were being delayed and so forth. It was signed. First one was hundred thousand US, which is one percent million. Within a month, he was around five hundred something thousand US. How much in grand? How familiar is this, how much? And the people, they bring it back to the ministry. Because if you have your car, you not give us. We want to give you cars that when we want to use them, you release them. We don't want your money. We want to give you the money by the Holy Ghost that everyone will know that this brother's money was given from the pulpit. So when we want it, when God wants it, he just tells you, "I want to have some meetings, I want to bless my children." Can we give the money? You are a steward. If we can just find it, three faithful brothers here, we are done. Okay. You don't want money. For brother Branham to come there, he says, "There's a sister who came with a cheque of 1.5 million." Then, right at that time, I had a trip to Africa. And it covered all the expenses. So, your salvation is tagged to that cheque and my receiving of the message. If that woman could not have gone down to brother Branham with that cheque, I was not going to see the message. Will you release it? Get it in abundance. I'll rebuke for you, the diva, in the name of Jesus Christ! I rebuke that diva, I rebuke that diva, I rebuke that diva, in the name of Jesus Christ! You can ask, I preached in Regent Park, there was a sister, cars were just having breakdown, then demons came out and saying, "We are crossing here, cars. No one will move. Evil spirits waking on cars." We rebuke that diva! Your cars! We will not have a breakdown. Your camper will not fall. Bless your crops. I'll bless you when you go out. You, eh, wha- When I go, you read Deuteronomy 28, the whole chapter, and silence all the critics. I don't have time, but I'm addressing the critics. I'm speaking from Deuteronomy 28. If we have got real business people, by tomorrow, she will, she will start planning a wedding. If one member suffer, all members will suffer with it. That's the church and Pentecost, they all had things in common. Let's come to where we help one another. Where does a need be there? When somebody is sick, let's look for someone with a gift of divine healing. Let's go for someone who is used by God to prophesy and bring the solution. That will be the invincible army of the Lord Jesus Christ. We will never be defeated, as long we have the Holy Ghost in operation. There will not be any witchcraft, there will not be any cancer, there will not be any deception, because the lion will be at a corner, the ox at a corner, the eagle will be flying and he sing and say, "Be careful with that spirit. Be careful with that spirit. We'll be telling you things to come. When the Holy Ghost comes, we'll tell you things to come." Before Corona came, I don't want to share the testimony in detail, but I'm saying, before coronavirus came, the Holy Ghost came to the church and say, "I have poured my wrath upon the whole world." Three months before. I'll show you things to come. If you don't believe in divine healing, there's coming worse off than Corona. I bless your crop. Waiting, growing on nature, waiting for the manifestation of the sons of God. God ordained it at the beginning, let's quickly go. You see, he gave men. Let's go back to our prophet. He is going to pray for a sick brother. He steps in the park where there's a killer bull. All of a sudden, "Oh, creature of God, sorry to come into your territory." Looked for the gun, it was left in the car. Looked for the tree, there was only a shrub. And death was before him. And there was a sign, "Beware of a killer bull." Then Genesis 1:26 was activated. Dominion over what? The cattle. It's actually mentioned in Genesis. He said, "I'm God's servant. I'm at my post of jute, going to pray for my sick brother. Sorry to disturb you, go back and lie there." It went. He is going to fish. Before he told the brothers, "Today, brother, you are going to see the glory of the Lord." They are fishing, having a good time. There was a little bit of some wind came. All of a sudden, they see a fish right floating with indies stains out. Something You know, his face could change, eh? Then the brothers begin to see him, then said, "What's going on here?" He stood there. Little fishy! I give you back your life in the name of Jesus Christ. The indies stay in the head, they took their position, and there was an operation. Little sister, I give you back your child in the name of Jesus Christ. Dominion over the fish of the sea. He is mowing. He disturbed the nest of the maggots, the hornets. Says, "Sorry creatures of God, go back to your nest." They all stopped. Went back. Comes to Oregon. The guy was beating the maniac. Had a record of beating preachers. The deacons stood, the police said, "Let him alone. This is not flesh and blood affair." Brother, I have seen you ask my wife most of the time, that's why I want to move with my wife. When demons comes out, I've told you that most of the time, I don't like this Holy Ghost which just comes upon sisters only. The Holy Ghost is not for sisters. I'm tired of these clapping hands from sisters only and the shouting from sisters. I want it all over. You know, sisters are good people, they've got a soft heart. Brothers have got a strong heart. When you hear an amen from a brother, you have to sweat. But if there are people who are demon possessed, it's brothers. In nice suits and driving nice cars. I have seen it. But you have to preach until you hit the place. You hit the place, you hit the furnace, you preach it, you preach it! You see, these funny styles and these funny things and these dropping downs and things coming in the message of the hour. You have to hit it so hard! Hit it so hard! Hit it so hard! Hit it- One time I was preaching in Namibia, I was preaching on "It wasn't so from the beginning." And there was this brother with long hair, Afro, and long beard, like the Muslims. So under the anointing, I just went there, I said, "It wasn't so from the beginning." Then I say, "Oh, sorry brother, sorry, sorry." When I came back to the pub, he said, "There's nothing to apologize, pastor. It wasn't so from the beginning." Tomorrow, he went to the barber and he came back to church clean-shaved. Today, he's preaching the gospel, baptizing people. It wasn't so from the beginning. These funny hairstyles. No wonder we don't have brothers who speaks in tongues. You can't speak in tongues with the, with some of these funny things, no, you can't! I am telling you, we have spoken in tongues. It takes you to, to boohoo on the altar, you cry, speak in saliva, and everything comes from the nose and everywhere. I know what I'm talking about, I know what I'm talking about. I know the experience of the Holy Ghost. We, we really put you down, you roll the floor ten times there. Then, we talk of speaking tongues in the house of God. We want brothers here that will speak in tongues. We want brothers here that will prophesy. We want brothers here that will see visions. Ah, come on church! Come on brother! Come on bride! Come on believer! Let me wreck it in the name of Jesus. Let me rebuke that fashion. It's fashion coming back to church. It's the fashion of the world. I condemn it in the name of righteousness and holiness. I feel anointed to rebuke that evil spirit in the name of Jesus. Yes! You clean your face and watch how the Holy Ghost will use you. Can I prove it to you? If the pastor, the way invited me, if I came here with these beers, you are not going to receive me. If you receive me next time, I'll come with a bush here. Yes, I'll come with it. You say, "Pastor, why can't you find something better than this?" Yes, I'll come with a bush here. So if I can clean up, you clean up your mess. You clean up your nonsense. You clean up, you clean up your rubbish. You put your trousers here and you put your belt here. You put your belt here, you put your trousers right here. You put it up there and receiving the Holy Ghost. You put your trousers right here. And you cover your breast, you cover your body there. Wash out the Holy Ghost who strike the church. I condemn it in the name of Jesus. I condemn modernism in the name of righteousness and holiness. Clean up the mess. Clean up the mess. Clean up the abuse. Clean up the mess. 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 Clean it up, clean it up, clean it up in the name of Jesus Christ. Clean up the mess, clean up the house of God. Sweep the trash out, sweep the trash out, sweep the house of God. Sweep the trash out, sweep the trash out, sweep, sweep it out. Sweep the trash out, sweep the trash out, sweep the trash out, sweep it out. Clean the house of God, clean the house of God. This is the house of prayer, this is the house of prayer. This is not the house of prostitution. This is not a beer hall. This is the house of prayer. My house, my house, my house shall be called the house of prayer. You come and leave your beers here. I used to paint my hair, it always left it there. Ah, we are salads, ah, we are, that means stupid African learning American dressing. And the Bible says, "For this they creep into houses and lead captive silly women, lathered with sins and die for sin. Silly brothers, silly sisters, silly brothers, walking out in the breast house. Silly girl, silly, silly, silly women." We want the Holy Ghost and fire here. Oh God, send down the fire just now. Burn on, burn on, burn on fire, God, till my dress is burned away. Prepare me for the rapture day. Brother Branham wanted to keep it. He was told, he had twentieth, twentieth century prophet. We are not that tissue bite, they will not receive you, you, you clean the face. You'll be preaching to mourners, you'll be praying for kings. You clean up this rubbish. If you don't understand his message, you watch his life. Sisters, help your brothers and say, "Honey, you go to the bathroom, you clean the mess. And you come and kiss me after, you, you take a shave." Yes! It ought to be done sometimes. Because I want to, because we want to see why we can't have, because Joel says, "She'll come to pass in the right, I'll pour my spirit, I'll pour it off there. Your sons and daughters shall prophesy." How can they prophesy with these long beers? How can they prophesy with their trousers right here? Right here. The breasts are out, who is going to speak in tongues here? I thank God, this is my last testament, tomorrow, early morning, if you look for me, you come and call the heirling. We want candidates here We want candidates here. To be used by the Holy Ghost. You have to fight it in prayer. We now have preachers like that also, in this message of the hour, like this newspaper prophets and internet prophets with this rubbish. They come in, I bless your pockets, I bless your, yeah, go deeper, you are not any deeper, you are on the surface. Is this divinely revealed truth? That will literally turn the hearts of the children back to the fathers. Is this divinely revealed truth that will literally take us back to raise the dead, this divinely revealed truth that will literally take us back to walk on water, to perform signs and wonders, to heal by the shadow, to heal by endergifts. Thus the purpose of the coming of the message of the hour, to make sons and daughters of God, not a bunch of denominations. Bunch of members, a bunch of people who quotes quotations that they don't have any idea about. Anyone can preach from an iPad, just search faith. You get the message faith from your knees there, all night in prayer and God comes down when you preach something that have come by the Holy Ghost, the Holy Ghost who come. Everyone on Facebook is your pastor, everyone on YouTube is your pastor, get away from YouTube there, get away from Facebook there, he is sat in the church. Facebook doesn't have no pulpit. Your pastor who see you through is ordained of God, not a Facebook preacher. Yes, I'm also on Facebook, I'm preaching there. But I'm preaching from here. Not just to open a page and say, you start to send quotations. You are now being told you don't need to go to confess your sins to the pastor. Rubbish. And you just confess your sins as you are praying there, you put your head between your legs and say, Lord forgive me, my adulterer, you go to the past. Confess your faults one to another and I will heal you. There's a woman who come who ran insane. The priest said, they can pour some gallons of oil, that thing will not go unless she makes it right. And she stood there and said, sister, your husband went away with work sometime. And you cheated on him, she said, oh brother Branham, that's the truth, please don't tell him, hope it divorce. Said, listen sister, you choose to be insane the rest of your life or you make this thing right, then go to heal. But don't worry sister, your husband works at this chef's lot company. I see him going out with a green car. Then inside the green car, he takes the girl that he works with wearing a pink dress and they commit the same act in the car. Say, ah, my husband doesn't do that, I say, I'm telling you, you go ask him, say, honey, did you ever go out with a green car at work? Then his eyes began to move, say, what, you are with brother Branham? You are with brother Branham? I told you yesterday that one time the Holy Ghost came, they say, Lloyd, you have got a robber in church with guns. By the name, sorry, and I went to look for the guy and he was there. If you come today, the Holy Ghost, the way is working brother, your name, your second name, your problem and solution to that dot. One brother was committing adultery like drinking water in church. And I began to really hate it. I was there every service, you know the priest speaks of another evangelist went to a city. He just comes to the pulpit, repent or perish. Second says, repent or perish, third says, repent, then the deacon say. God bless you brother Lloyd from Zimbabwe. Don't you have something else to preach about? The preacher said, I have a lot. But I will not preach anything else until they repent first. God doesn't take you to grade two unless you pass grade one. Brother, I have seen demons coming, last August when in Namibia, I was preaching and I began to come brother. The demons started coming out from sisters, I was just preaching, you could see them spin and all that, then the Holy Ghost was waking brother. Then I called the preacher, say pray for that sister, we're praying, then the Holy Ghost just came, there I say, go and rebuke such and such on that sister there. I just went there, I said to you, I prayed in shona so that no one would hear me and the thing left. Then a demon came out from my brother. Pastor Xavier, as I was preaching, he just went to lay hands on that brother, those demons came out brother. Ah, there was violence. And I have seen men running away. Then my wife have to hold hands, then I scream, I say, brothers, please come. Don't do that. If you have the Holy Ghost, why are you running away? You are running away because you know what you are doing. You can't cast out those devils with, when you have these beers. One time I was praying for another sister, demons came out, I asked another brother to help, that demon actually said, Chinamasa, who is this one? You, I can go but this, I said, no, 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 I'm dealing with you. I called him to, to hold you, he has nothing to do with you, you deal with me. He was almost being disowned by evil spirits. I had to stand in the gap by commission, say, it's me who is casting you out, not this one, this one is just holding hands. Then I said, you heard that, you sort out your mess. You become the sons of Skifa. Paul we know, Jesus we know, why? They are there demons here, right now. If we hit these pews there, you see them coming out. Then the Holy Ghost came and said, you go rebuke this and that on that brother. So I went, I said, brothers, stop praying, you will be wasting time. This brother, you rebuke this and that and that and that, pray like that. Started praying in shona again. The moment I named it out, left. Then I went to Pastor Xavier, I said, pastor, you talk to that man there, he did one, two, three, four, five. The pastor says, he saw me last week, that's the truth. You can call him and check, he will tell you that. The ex of the Holy Spirit. But I was genuine enough to go there where there was no mic. Start for show off. Okay, yes, he gave Jesus Christ and Jesus gave it in his name with his assurance, ask, let's quickly go brother, in the Father, in the name, and I will do it, oh brother, Paul, Ma, for the manifestation of the sons of God, the position. As I said, the book of Ephesians is the book of Joshua and Joshua blessing the people where, did we get, let's quickly go there. I wish you, you are now in the wrong message, we are in the message, why Christ speaker? How did you come to this one? Yes. We're talking about blessing the crops, right, let's go on top there. Where we see, we are blessing the crops brother, we want to bless the gardens of the sisters, not these beers, we want to leave these beers in, the brothers will get angry with me brother. Quickly brother. Yeah, let's, let's forty-five, forty-four somewhere there where we left, okay. Where we left, yeah, somewhere there isn't, I must play, yeah, let's go again forty-three. Let's go forty-two, yeah, and everyone knows that for, okay, let's go, let's go there. Right. Let's go again forty-one maybe, let's go, right. So now, I'm going to say something to you now that I haven't said all along and that is the thing that we have been looking forward to for so long, for at least many years, four or five years or maybe longer. The third pool have now been vindicated and I'm sure you all know what it is, now remember, there will never be any impersonation of that. Because it can, it can't be used, see, it cannot be, now, it's in existence. When something is said, it's there, you may not be able to see it. There's a camera there, but you being not able to see doesn't mean it's not there. It's in existence. So it's in existence when brother Branham was there, when he went away, it went isn't? That should be, isn't, where? Yeah. 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 It's in what? And I am warned. Of this, that soon, right at this time now, it just happened. Right at this time now, it just happened, so it could identify its presence among you. I don't know if you catch that. Right at this time, it just happened and people, they didn't see it. But he is saying to identify his presence among you. Then he goes on to say. See, but it will not be used, I like this part, in a great way. But in a minor way, small way or little way, until things begin to tighten up. If I want to go to the shops, I may take the little Corolla car, but if I want to go to the highway, I pull out the Range Rover, it's there in the garage, but I'm not using it because I don't have the journey to do that, it's there. Waiting for a long trip to go to Zim, but I know my Range is there. So I can drive around with a Corolla around the city, but come Zim trip? The Range. Let the ecumenical move start now. There's something in existence, but you have to see it gradually go growing. You can't say the war, you started, you are rushing to Russia to look for guns and the tanks, no, you will be beaten up. You buy the things, the nuclear, you put them there. Then you start your mischief to open your mouth and talk, talk, you know that you are backed up. But when you start mischief without anything, oh, you're in trouble. Then it's, huh? It not be used in a great way until this council begins to tighten up and when it does, when that does, the Pentecostals and so forth can almost impersonate, anything can be done. But when that time comes, when the squeeze comes down, then you will see. What you have seen temporarily. Be manifested in the fullness of its power. See, now, I must continue in evangelism, I must, as a commission first, I must continue there, you have heard the word and you know what to look for, how to stand, I must continue on evangelism and friends of mine, keep still and just keep moving on, for the hour is coming. And it's approaching swiftly to see that when something is going to be done now, you might see some little odd. Things happen for me, nothing sinful, I don't mean that. But I mean something odd to what the regular trend of the Durban meetings with seventeen trucks of people, that was the regular trend. Then he says, you are going to see something odd in the ministry, it's like the power and everything is gone, huh, that's what he's talking about, huh? Because where I reached to now in the ministry, I am dropping back here. Watching that spot and waiting for the time to use it, but it's going to be used. So he reached a certain place where he can't go any further, just to drop, just to say, I've raised the dead, I've healed the cancer, what more, I've spoken squirrels into existence. Okay, you tell me, what else can he do if a man reaches that? What does John fourteen twelve say? Greater works than this. Because I go to the Father. And the prophet says, you can't do any greater because he did everything, he said more of the same nature. Then he says, did you notice when Jesus performed his first miracle? He turned water into wine, which someday potentially could become wine, it's in the message Shalom nineteen sixty-four. He said, he took bread, which was once wheat, grown bread. Then baked the bread, then he broke it and the prophet said, another piece of bread growed out of it. But he's trying to tell you that the wheat was grown there in the field, was taken to the grind mills and everything, then was baked to kill the cells. But he breaks from that, another bread growed out from that. Then he quotes John fourteen twelve, he says, you are going to do greater. Than that. He took a fish which once swum in the waters, then he said, a bird or a fried fish there was, then he broke it, another fish growed. Out of it. With dead cells. If you cook your food when you are full, then if it doesn't come, don't cook again, you bless that food, give to that people. We did it one time and it worked. Go to Shalom, it's two messages, that speaks the same thing and God's gifts always finding their place, huh? Which potentially might have been wine, but it was water first and when he fed five thousand, what did he do? He took something that had been like water. You know what Jesus did? I said this to another place, give me a piece of paper maybe. Come here brother, I want a real believer, not a make one, are you sure you're one? So Jesus. I'm on John what? Fourteen, what does it say? The works I do shall you do also. So Jesus takes bread, he told the disciples, tell them to sit fifty-fifty, then he gave Peter a piece. Just John fourteen, then Peter goes. He never came back to Jesus. You didn't catch it? When Jesus broke this piece of bread and gave to the disciples, he told them to sit fifty-fifty. So when Peter started giving people, he was breaking and another grew, and he went his row. Ah, you caught it now. Then another one was going with his row of fifty, they never come and say, give us another, I'm, I'm on the number, 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 number five. No, the works I do shall you do also, I'm giving you one piece, you give fifty. You give fifty. You give fifty. You give fifty. And the twelve baskets were left full from the hands of the apostles. That's John fourteen twelve, that's where we are now. Did you catch it? Did you catch it, brother? Then the prophet says, the critic will say them loaves of those days were big. Brother, those people, we have them right now. No matter what happens, they don't believe. Three kinds of believers in every church. Even in Nauton, they are there. I'll show you a testimony as I close. So he says, let me prove to you, say, that them loaves of those days were not big. This was a boy's lunchbox going to school. Because how can a mother, normal mother, can pack in the boy's lunchbox? Five loaves, he says, and two fishes. What do you call these ones in the sea? Not the big ones, the sharks. Because this way, the other, in, I think Mark says four thousand, the other one says five thousand, he says, without counting children and what? Now, I will tell you that those people are almost twenty thousand. Yes? Because if we say five, four thousand men and their wives, it's now what, eight? And every family have got four children. The Bible says, they didn't count men with children and what? But they were also fed. So the actual figure there was not four thousand, was not five thousand. Around twenty. And they left twelve full baskets. Because these were twelve apostles to prove to you that as they were breaking the bread, it was growing again in the hands of the apostles to fulfill John fourteen twelve. Is that so? Then the prophet says, let's say them loaves, they were big on those days, let's agree, they were big. But where did the twelve baskets of leftovers came from? That's the end of the story. I'm closing. Sorry for taking long. One time, I ran out of fuel and I was driving and pick up a bucket. I called my brother-in-law to come with the jergen and the fuel in the, in that container. Then I said, but the time that you come from there and I'm stuck here. No, let me pray. I prayed, I said, you vehicle, I want you to move from here. You go and park at this pump where I normally put fuel. I started it. Took off. I know you're curbing him, but you don't believe it. That I know very well, that's, that, that, that can split your head ten times. So I drove. When I got to that pump, it switched off, and I regretted, I should have said, you park at, at my workplace. I asked the guy to put ten dollars for me, and I told him I'll come back with the money, so I finally got to work there. Then I told everyone about it, and some believed, some didn't, I said, okay, that's fine. One day I was with another brother and I was driving an automatic car. If you want, you can try it. We were going. It had already indicated that we have run out of fuel, the tank had been amber, red, and all of a sudden switched off right in the inner lane in the middle of the road. And there was a brother. That's something just said. Tell him if he believes, I said, brother, do you believe that testimony I shared with you? When I ran out of fuel with the bucket? That's when I noticed he didn't believe. I said, but today we are here. Do you believe God can take us to work from here? He said, yes, I said, let's pray. We prayed. I said, Lord, can you help us? And start this car? And we go to park it right where I park it at work? Without fuel? It started. It switched off when I go to my parking brake. Then I took the keys. I went inside, I said, gentlemen, that thing has happened again in the mouth of two or three witnesses. But anyone who thinks it's a fiction, here are the car keys, go and move that car where it is. Because that car doesn't have fuel. If you think we are telling stories, here are the keys, I gave someone keys, they, when they started, could not move. That's some years back. To prove there was no what, fuel, we had to go to buy fuel. Here's the beautiful story that maybe you can believe. I shared this testimony last month or so back home in church. And obviously, people say pastor have started. Okay, what's the difference of that car moving without fuel and this projector not working? Last time I told you that the Holy Ghost designed my car in detail. Somebody to speak in tongues and interpreted and picked the problem of my vehicle. When you are sitting there, you've got a problem that you don't know how to fix it, and the Holy Ghost knows that you don't believe, goes to work on the projector gadgets. This is a challenge for you. You think God did it for fun? So at church now, this one brother said, ah, that's fine, he was driving, coming to the all night. He ran out of fuel. I don't know whether I had faith or what, he said, Lord, if pastor told us the truth, let this car, even the pastor himself, he's at the all night with everyone in church. If he told us the truth, let this car go and park at church. He started it, he came, he parked it. So he was excited, he came and said, pastor, you were telling the truth, I came with that car, it's outside, it doesn't have fuel. I said, no, don't tell us jokes here, we are not children, give us the keys. I said, anyone who wants to prove to remove that car where it is. We gave about two, two brothers, they didn't move it, there was no fuel. If people, the whole church was there. If you have a breakdown at a place which is written what? Those places where they throw stones and high-risk areas. You pray and tell the vehicle to take you where it's safe. Sometimes you're not even, you waste money to go to the garage to fix it, it will be fixed. To those that were not here in the morning, the brothers could not start the projector, it couldn't, it was not working. They came into the office where I was and said, pastor, can you pray for that thing there? And we prayed for it, it started working. Let our faith rise up until we reach the climax of our faith, that's my simple message to you. Without faith, it is impossible to receive your healing. Yet the healing promise is sure. As Romans four sixteen says, let it be by faith, so that it might be by grace, to the end the promise might be sure fulfilled. Without faith, it's impossible to receive the Holy Ghost. Yet the baptism of the Holy Ghost's promise is a sure promise. Without faith, it is impossible to raise the dead. But the promise is sure. Let's turn to our feet as we open Matthew ten from verse one. God bless you, brothers. Fine Christian brothers. God bless your sisters. You are such a wonderful, lovely people. And when he had called unto him his twelve disciples, he gave them power against unclean spirits to cast them out, not to keep them. Someone shout, out! Cast them out! And to heal all men of sicknesses. Psalms one oh three, who healed all thy diseases? Now where are you, brothers? And all men of diseases. Let's go to verse five, let's leave the names, you can put your names there. These twelve Jesus sent forth and commanded them, saying, go not into the way of the Gentiles and into any seat of the servants, enter you not, but go rather to the loss ship of the house of Israel. And as you go, heal, uh, and as you go, preach, saying, as John the Baptist was sent to foran, the first coming of Jesus Christ. This message foran, the second coming. That's the main thing. As you go to preach, the kingdom of God is at hand. Preach the rapture. After you talk of the second coming, as you are talking about it, heal the sick. Jesus is not saying, I will be healing the sick. Heal the sick. Cleanse the lepers. Raise the dead. I told you in Nauton, we had a grandmother who died, it was a Wednesday, we pray she come back to life. Freely you have received. Freely give. I'm closing by saying, the prophet says, a brother comes and say, my crops are dying, Ben. He says, you say, brother, I will send you freely, you have received. Freely give. My closing remarks is, there's no preacher that will come behind the pulpit without anything to give. According to this scripture, I give you your heart's desires. Can you say, freely you have received? That's why we don't sell anointing oil in the message of the hour. Freely you have received, freely give. And anointing oil is not even given freely, it's not even sold. Any among you afflicted, let him pray. Any merry, let him sing songs, any sick, let him go to the elders of the, anoint him with oil. So we anoint you with oil, we keep the oil, we don't give you the anointing oil. There's no any anointing that we give you will lead you to the Holy Ghost baptism. There's no power that we give you. Acts one eight, you shall receive power after the Holy Ghost has come upon you. And when you receive that power, you will be a witness. Our men can receive their desires. Our men came sick and they are healed, can you remain with your hands up? The rest, you can put your hands down. Those that came sick and they are now healed. And that's good. Come pastor. Thank you very much. God be with you until we meet again. Where I have reached to now in these services, I can't go any further. I must decrease that the pastor may increase. Hallelujah. Praise his wonderful name. Amen, it's so sweet to trust in Jesus. Hallelujah. As we just take a few minutes to time of worship and to praise his wonderful name and glorify this great God and the wonderful things that he is doing in our lives and hallelujah, we want to find our place in the book of Acts. We want to take our position, we don't want to just be talking and talking and talking. We want to walk where the apostles walk, we want to walk where the Son of Man walked, we want to do what the Son of Man did, that's the promise. We have the full word. The full word with power, hallelujah. The full word with power, you believe, my brother, you believe, my sister. Hallelujah, your faith has been stirred, your faith has been elevated. Hallelujah, walk with faith and claim and take what is rightfully yours, don't live underprivileged. Hallelujah, don't live like a beggar, don't eat from a dustbin. Hallelujah, when you have a table spread for you, hallelujah. It's so sweet to trust in Jesus, hallelujah. It's so sweet to trust in Jesus. Hallelujah.
So sweet to trust in Jesus. Just to take.
Oh, take him at his word.
Give him his way. Just to rest. I'm all his own. Just to know. That's it, the Lord. How I trust him. How I throw him over. Hey, Jesus. Jesus, Jesus. Great Jesus. Oh, grace. To trust him.
Oh, how sweet.
Oh, how sweet.
Yes.
To trust him. Just to trust. To trust him. Please take. Just to see him face. Just to see. See him. Is me. I am. He's me. Jesus.
Hallelujah. Just worship him as you sing. Hallelujah. Oh, just fix your eyes on that old rugged cross.
I've thrown him over. He's over. Jesus. My Jesus. Precious Jesus. Oh, grace. To trust him.
Yes, it is sweet. Oh, yes. Hallelujah.
He's so sweet. To trust him. Just from seeing, just from seeing. It's a. To see. Oh, just. For Jesus. Still. It's a. Life and rest.
Hallelujah.
Joy and. Jesus, my Jesus. Yes.
Hallelujah.
I trust him. I've thrown him over. He's over. Jesus.
We love you Lord.
Jesus.
We bless your wonderful name.
Praise.
Hallelujah.
Just to.
Oh, we glorify your wonderful name tonight.
Oh, grace. To trust him. I'm so glad.
So glad. Hallelujah.
I let you trust him. Let you. Precious Jesus. Precious Jesus. Your faith. And I owe him. I owe. God. Will be with me today. Will be. And it will. To love. Oh, my Jesus. Jesus. Jesus.
Oh, we bless your name.
How I. Oh, oh. I've thrown him over. He's over. Jesus. Oh, Jesus. Praise. Oh. To trust him. Oh, Jesus. Jesus. Oh. How I. I've thrown him over. Oh, my Jesus.
Jesus.
Jesus. Oh, my Jesus. Precious. Oh. Oh, grace. To trust him.
Hallelujah. Let's just worship him, my beloved. Hallelujah. The word of the Lord has gone forth. This is your time. This is your moment. This is to express how you feel in your heart, what God has done for you over the series of the, of the meetings. Just worship him. Just take some, a few minutes and, and say, "Lord, I want to thank you for the great thing that you are doing in my life, oh God." Hallelujah, oh Jesus. Oh, God, we love you. We worship you, oh God. Hallelujah, Lord. You're not looking to some denomination to write another book of Acts, oh God. You're not looking some Pentecostal movement to write another book of Acts, oh God. You're looking to your little bitty bride that you have raised up in this hour, Lord Jesus. And Lord, you have provided, you have given the revealed word. You have sent us the Son of Man. There's been a loosening of the Holy Spirit to come back again, Father, to reproduce what was in the Son of Man, in the bride of the Lord Jesus Christ, oh God. Hallelujah, Lord. We love you, Lord Jesus. Hallelujah, Lord. Hallelujah, Lord Jesus. We want to see what was happening in the book of Acts again, Lord, in the Omega Church of God. The thing is supposed to be here, Father. We're supposed to have faith and doctrine and fellowship and breaking of bread and prayers and, Lord, miracles and gifts, oh God. It's supposed to be in the church, oh God. Hallelujah, Lord. Help us, Lord Jesus. Help us, oh God. That which was in the Alpha Church must be in the Omega Church, oh God. If we don't see the thing happening, something is wrong. Something is wrong if we don't see the thing happening. That means the power of God is not here. Hallelujah. We need that spirit to quicken that word and make it to live. Hallelujah. Ask yourself, how can I see the book of Acts in my church? How can I see the book of Acts in my life? How can I move into it? How can I, as an individual, take my place in the book of Acts? How can you become conditioned to operate where your life reflects the book of Acts? Church, that is not something to come. Hallelujah. God has done all things, ALL, all things in this day. That's why God took his messenger off the scene, because it's done. It's done. He's leaving a church to walk in that footprints. And when you walk in that footprint, you walk where, you walk right where the messenger walked. Hallelujah. Doesn't the Bible say, "Did not Joshua and Caleb walk where Moses walked? Did not Elisha walk where Elijah walked? Did not the apostles walk where Jesus walked?" Then tell me how we can't walk where Elijah walked, where Moses walked, where Christ walked, when that same ministry has come back in our day? Tell me why we can't walk. Hallelujah, where the Son of Man walked, when we see the pattern of the Bible. Hallelujah. We see that pattern in the Bible that shows us the ones that were called out. It shows us where they walked. It shows us what they did. Hallelujah. They wasn't doing something new. They wasn't doing something strange. They were doing things that they'd seen the Son of Man do. They'd seen things that Jesus do. Hallelujah. Oh, the works that Moses did, Joshua and Caleb did, the works that Elijah did, Elisha must do, you the bride. The works that Jesus did, the apostles did, then what about us? Then what about us? What's stopping us? What's crippling us? What's paralyzing our faith? Only unbelief. But your faith has been challenged. How can we get into it? He's giving us the keys. Hallelujah. This is the all-time gospel. This is the all-time religion to walk in his word. Hallelujah. Blessed be his wonderful name. As we sing the first stanza in the chorus, hallelujah, it's so sweet to trust in Jesus. Hallelujah. Thank you, Lord.
He's so sweet to trust him.
You trust him. Hallelujah.
To take. He's with. Just to rest. I'm all his own. Just to. I see. Oh, Jesus. Is. I trust him. I've thrown him over. Way to. Jesus. Jesus. Precious. Precious. Oh, for grace. Oh, for. To trust him.
Hallelujah. With our heads bowed and our eyes closed, we truly want to be an apostolic church with apostolic faith, with apostolic signs and wonders. Hallelujah, Lord. I'm just going to invite my precious pastor Denzel Ariamutu to just come up. Hallelujah. Pray for us and dismiss the service. Pray for Pastor Lloyd Chinamasa and his dear wife Kudzi. Hallelujah. We are so appreciative for this wonderful week that God has granted to us. Hallelujah.
Shall we pray tonight? Father, we are grateful. Lord, our hearts are just bubbling with joy, just coming out here in your presence tonight. We just thank you, Lord, for all that you are doing in amidst our midst, in this last age, Lord God, where the bride is coming to her maturity, Lord. Bride is coming to adoption, Father God. The prophet said, "In the Christ and mystery of God reveal, the fullness is back in the church, the fullness that was before the foundation of the world, when God saw himself becoming flesh." Your prophet, Lord, didn't stop at Jesus Christ 2,000 years ago, but revelation has been progressive. Your prophet said, "God saw himself becoming flesh in us, a many-membered bride," where that power of the word is manifesting itself in this day. And we want to thank you, Lord God, for your servant that has ministered so ably tonight, Lord, that has been a spearhead, Lord God, here in Durban, Lord, to ignite a fire, Lord God, to get us moving in the right direction, Lord, to bring us back to our realization, Lord, of what the church ought to be in this last day, Lord. Father, to remove that amnesia, Lord. That is what the word does. The word removes the amnesia, Lord, so we could realize who we are, Lord, what we are called to be in this final day, the final voice in the final age. We want to thank you, Lord, for your grace and your mercy, Lord. We thank you for the open book, Lord. We thank you for the fullness of your word. We thank you for the restoration of all things, Lord. You said, "The greater works shall we do, Lord God." And your prophet said, "Greater means more, because there's a many-membered body. There's more believers, more people that will do the greater works." And we are looking forward to that great overpowering in this last age. We pray you bless your servant, Lord, Pastor Lloyd Chinamasa, Lord, that has made that wonderful sacrifice, Lord, to leave his family back home, to leave his church back home, and come to be a blessing here in Durban. We pray you restore his strength. We pray you bless his ministry. Bless his church. Bless his family, Lord. Take him from strength to strength and glory to glory. Bless your servant Pastor Rodney, Lord, for hosting his services, Lord, together with the church and his family, for all the expenses, Lord God, for all the sacrifices. May you honor them tonight and remember them tonight. I pray, God, for everyone that has come. Lord, when we leave here, Lord, we could say, "The things that we have come for, we have received, Lord, without a shadow of doubt tonight." We pray for safe traveling mercies, Lord, as we wind our way back home. We pray the angel of the Lord God over our vehicles, taking us safe till we meet again. In the name of Jesus Christ, we ask these mercies. Much thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen. Praise his wonderful name. Praise his wonderful name. You may be seated. Hallelujah. Once again, we want to just express our sincere gratitude and thankfulness to Pastor Lloyd Chinamasa. Let's put our hands together. Hallelujah. The Lord bless you, my dear brother, and take our love and greetings back home to the church in Norton and to your family. And God willing, let he give you grace to pass our way again, to bless us. Would you like that? Would you like that? So that is an appointment on your calendar. Hallelujah. And we believe that God will bring you to pass. You've been a wonderful, wonderful blessing and a wonderful inspiration, not just to Bible Tavern here, but to the believers in Durban and in the different places that you have ministered to. You've started something. You've ignited something. Amen. To push us and to get us into the rhythm of the word. And we appreciate that. We really do. And we thank the Lord for giving you grace and the courage to minister these things to the bride of the Lord Jesus Christ here. Amen. So we are very, very happy. And the Lord bless our precious sister Kudzi. Amen. We appreciate you, sister. We certainly love you. Amen. Our love to the, to divine and shalom also. Praise the Lord. Amen. So we're going to dismiss. May the Lord take you home safely. Give you a blessed week. Hallelujah. A real blessed week. Hallelujah. In dismissing, Abraham's blessings are mine.
Abraham's blessings are mine. Abraham's blessings are mine. Oh, Abraham's blessings are mine. Oh, Abraham's blessings are mine. They are mine. Abraham's blessings are mine. They are all mine. Blessings are mine. They are all mine. Blessings are mine. Oh, Abraham's blessings are mine. So I'm blessed. I'm blessed going in. I'm blessed going out. Blessed going in. Blessed going out. Blessed going in. I'm blessed going out. Abraham's blessings are mine. They are mine. Abraham's blessings are mine. They are all mine. Blessings are mine. They are mine. Abraham's blessings are mine. Oh, Abraham. You only know. I bet you see. Through eyes of light. I was the old place. An empty space. If not enough. Where would I be? Where would I be? But you only know. Yes, I'm glad you see. But you see through eyes of light. I was the old place. I was the old place. An empty space. An empty space. If not enough. It's amazing, Chris. I'm empty, Chris. Sweet as a. Yes, I once was lost. I once was lost. Oh, yes. But now I'm found. Old place. I was the old place. An empty space. An empty. In empty space? If not enough.
Come on, please.